Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ray Sayer, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item B is the adoption of the agenda.
There are no changes. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adopt the agenda as posted and delivered and allow the chair to deviate as necessary.
Second.
I have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item C, call to the public. And we will start with Jesus. Hérez?
Hérez.
Hérez. Good morning, Mr. Hérez.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, friends and neighbors. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. The first of those things is that my favorite season is election season. One, I get to deal with the elections department, which is a joy. The second is that this gnome-like creature appears in the neighborhood streets and he bears with him gifts, a square nose shovel, two men working signs, and a truck full of black asphalt. We have a lot of potholes and he starts to fill those potholes up. The problem is he only appears during election seasons. Maybe we could send him out a little more frequently. Thank you. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about is I have appeared twice before this body. The first time I was asking questions. The second time, I blamed you for the problem that I was trying to solve. And that is radio communications for the Sheriff's Department. Couple of days ago, I entertained a visit by a deputy who was in my neighborhood. I was behaving, it wasn't me. And we were talking and suddenly he had to leave because my home is otherwise known as a black dead hole for radio communications and telephone communications. I have to have a repeater, a booster and repeater just to have cellphone service. Now Wi-Fi has solved a lot of that problem. But the sheriff's deputy still has not gotten proper communications. Excuse me. I've decided on a novel approach to fix that problem and I hope to implement it pretty soon. But I still think it's a problem that you need to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address the board? A call to the public? Because I only have one speaker slip. Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? Okay, nobody's raising their hand and nobody's hitting star nine, so we will move on. To current events. Supervisor Malera?
Mr. Chair, good morning. I have a few items to report. First and foremost, I had the honor and privilege of attending via Zoom Kelly's Kitchen where Senator Kelly well, reports to a group of Arizonans after what's going on in Washington right now. Secondly, I had a meeting with Mayor Mandonado and Robert Guevara. And one of my questions I posed to Robert Guevara was the possibility of full redundancy down to Santa Cruz County by Unisource. And he says it's not on their radar in the near future, unfortunately. And lastly, I also attended an LTC meeting via Zoom. And so far, this session, there have been 17 bills signed and 20 bills vetoed by the governor. There's one bill that was brought for heads up to us where I believe was brought up at the last minute, so we couldn't vote on it. And it's trying to have sales of fireworks year-round on the side of the road. And that can be a potential problem for our counties with fire season coming up or just fire season period. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Malera. Vice Chairman Reese?
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Great to be here first. I would like to say how blessed I am that my father turned 97 on Sunday. We were able to celebrate his 97th birthday. You know, in spite of his age, he's doing pretty well health-wise. I'm fortunate, too, that I still have my mother at 90. So we were very blessed to be able to celebrate with the family. My sisters and nephews came in from Nebraska to celebrate the 97th. I'm hoping that he stays in good health. So maybe in three years, we can celebrate his 100th birthday. And even though I tell him that, he says I shouldn't love him so much. So fortunate with that. We did have the opportunity to attend the Governor's International State of the State up in Phoenix, held at the Biltmore. It was a packed house. We got the opportunity to network with a lot of people that do business with the state. There was a panel that was held there with Governor Hobbs, Iowa Jimenez, U.S. Coast General General of Mexico, Stefan Schneider, the Council General of Germany in Los Angeles, and Dr. Hild, Hildy, Heldit Newman, Council General of Israel. And they were talking about the importance of foreign investment in the state of Arizona. And, you know, a lot of us, at least I didn't know about the amount of foreign investment that goes on into this country, into the state from all over the world. As evident by the chips that are now going to be manufactured up in the Phoenix area. That's a Taiwanese company. The Canadians that also invest a lot of money. The Israelis that invest money into watering. They've, they live in a desert and they've learned how to make best use of the very precious resource that we all need. And so I was a, it's a great event to attend and gives us the opportunity, not just to hear what's happening, but also to make contacts with some other people. I think at our table, we had Michael and I can't remember what Michael's name. He's working for the University of Arizona now, working with law enforcement and cyber. He's a retired Colonel from the Army. Have his contact information. And it was kind of cool to kind of pick at his brain. So other than that, I think that's all I have to report. And one thing, Sheriff, if I may ask, can you please at some point kind of give us an update of what's happening with the radios? I know that this is the second or third time that a couple of people that have come, I know you've been here and there was someone else here before, as to what the situation is of the radios. I think it's important that our community understands what we're trying to do to make sure that they're safe. So I would appreciate maybe a report that maybe at our next meeting to where we're at and what is it that we need to do so.
Sheriff, can I go first?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I wasn't present at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. I was participating in a Border Counties Coalition meeting with the Governor Hobbs. It was a good conversation about issues that the border counties are facing. And it's not just illegal immigration issues. It's issues that we're having with the state funding. It's issues that were, you know, things that we feel are important in providing for a good economy for our constituents. And there was a broad topic. So if you take those things and you say, how many times can we drill down? It was a really good conversation with the governor. We were with her for a couple hours. I had the opportunity, I'd like to thank Jennifer St. John and Deputy County Manager Jesus Valdez. They arranged a meeting with the group at West Gate in Santa Cruz County that are trying to donate a piece of land to the county for a park. So I was able to go out there and attend that. That was great. Had a meeting with Steve Farley from the Pima County Humane Society, talking about an animal control shelter in Santa Cruz County and how we can, and different ways we can get that done. They have an architect that has built many shelters around the state. And so he's looking at our plans to see if we've overlooked anything. The, also on this Saturday, I was able to attend the Rio Rico Thespians had their final play of the year. It was a great play and kudos to them. And it was a nice performing arts center that was part of the bond that was passed in Rio Rico was the creation of that performing arts center. So kudos to that group. And then thank you to the Forest Service. They did a prescribed burn. They just completed a prescribed burn in the Coronado National Forest. These prescribed burns in our area, in our community, help keep us safe. And so we really appreciate the fact that they're doing them, spending the money, and working to keep us safe. And that is what I have to report. And we'll move on to the manager's report.
Good morning again. Over the last two weeks, we made significant progress with our class and comp study. As you know, the board generously supported an overall class and comp study. So I'd like to thank PR3, who set up all the interviews, but the elected officials and department heads, as well as a huge thanks to our employees. They did over 180 interviews in one week. And we were the most well-attended interview sessions that the company has ever had. So our employees really came out. What that's going to do is allow the company to give us all new job descriptions, update all of our job descriptions, have them match what our employees are actually doing, recommend any changes that we may have, and then just give us an overall better salary structure, a layout. I've also been reviewing the personnel policy. As you know, I started that early in my tenure here as county manager. So I'm hopeful to have that to the departments by the summertime. We did some succession planning for the executive director for our Arizona County Insurance Pool. So as you all know, that's our property liability insurance. And we just want to make sure that we have a good succession planning for that executive director should he decide to retire at any point in the future. I also attended two meetings on some new software implementation that will be rolling out soon, one for public records requests and one for a more electronic way of doing our time sheets. And finally, I attended the two CSA meetings for the review that Supervisor Malera mentioned of our state legislation and the policies that they're trying to create. And then also a budget discussion with CSA. So that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item E, department reports and activities, finance, cash, investments, expenditures, and revenue. Maricio, you have your UCLA colors on again.
Mr. Chairman, good morning again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
No, they're not kind of Yukon, red, blue, and gold like they were last night. Who knows?
The cash and investment report. The general fund has an overall balance of $18,944,893 with an investment amount of $14,561,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $1,156,927 with an investment amount of $7,144,000. The flood control district fund has an overall balance of $1,101,012 with an investment amount of $270,000. And the jail district has an overall balance of $4,280,631 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $49,450,182 with an investment amount of $17,725,720 for an estimated end-of-month balance of $13,780,956.
Supervisor Malera, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
None for me, but I guess we all got the memo to wear some sort of blue today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we recess our regular session and convene it to the flood control district.
Second.
I have a motion to second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Angie, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, and members. I'm here to report the March report. On March, we had approximately 6.36 inches of rain in the Santa Cruz County area alone, which if you average it out is about .4892 inches of rain. The water basin itself, that includes part of Mexico, had 11.52 inches of rain, which averaged out .50 or half an inch of rain. So the average for the month of March is between 84, .84 to .87 inches of rain. So we were below. Our next item is our Efrain Canyon project. Right now, the SOQ is being reviewed by FEMA. And there was a slight change in the scope on the work. And we have, the SOQ should be going to actually the CA's office today as soon as I get it back from the consultant. The Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project, on March 21st, you approved the contracts with Kimberly Horn. And a notice to proceed was issued already on the 30th. So they should be starting on that project very, very soon. The downtown area, I believe I already gave you guys a map. And that will actually affects more than one map. It affects two maps that will be changing for our overall changes that will be pending. I'll get you a date. I didn't get that yet. I need to know when it's going to be in the federal registry. And then six months after that, it'll become effective. Potero Creek. Oh, yeah. Potero Creek, the lomar, that they'll be changing. Changes right now, all of Chula Vista and Peakeitchin are currently in the floodway mostly. That will be changing, but I have not seen the map for that. Once I get that, I will be giving that to you. And as far as the 404 compliance, I know we already had that in, but fish and wildlife have not gotten back to us. We did have our five-year review for the CRS rating that was turned in last March and we're waiting for their verification on our results. As far as the flood hazard information sheets, we had 219, 42 in the city, 172 in the county, five in the town of Patagonia. 14 floodplain news permits were requested, six in the city, eight in Santa Cruz County, four site reviews. All of them were in Santa Cruz County. No drainage complaints. The city of Nogales is here and I believe the town of Patagonia is on the phone.
Okay, so.
And the report is also attached.
Questions for Angie?
None of the director, and thank you for emailing them last night. I got to read it, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Angie, so we have a monthly report from the city of Nogales. Juan? Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and members of the public. I'm here to let you know that two months ago, or less than two months ago, we were able to work together, county and city. We joined force, equipment, and labor to fix portion of the Nogales Wash. The Santa Cruz County Flood Control District helped us with funding for buying materials. And they also offered equipment and labor. So we were able to fix a segment of the Nogales Wash that was the most critical, but we still have more work to do. The good thing about it is that we have an Army Corps of Engineers permit now, so we can go and fix the channel. Hopefully before the monsoon, we'll try to do as much as we can. So I will coordinate with Jesus and Howdy to continue working together. I know that when we have to put employees working there, we have to set aside our daily activities. But at least combining, I don't know, two employees from the county, two employees from the city is enough to continue making progress there. So that's my plan. So I will continue doing little by little, but at least do something before the monsoon.
So this is, so you can protect the O'Callum Drive. I know that if you go up north, Grand Avenue, you can see the areas that are, to me, of big concern because of the scouring that has happened there over the years. I know that there's been some materials that have been dumped there to try to stabilize. But do you eventually have a plan that the Corps of Engineers will approve to try to, as best we can, permanently solve that issue?
Yes, sir. What we have been doing is using soil cement and then protected with the face of the soil cement with grounded or slurry concrete. So the first portion that we did, we still need to continue with protecting the face of that. But soil cement works very well, needs to be done in layers, compacted well. And it works like concrete, so that's the plan. And that was, well, was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers to be done there. So.
And then, of course, you have to wait for the slip lining of the sewer line because of the big pipes that are up there right close to the edge of the road and the wash, right?
You are correct. A segment of the wash, we cannot do anything at this point, but there is another segment where we can work. But, yeah, so we'll try to do progress wherever we can.
Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. And then on something else, we have been cleaning basins citywide in Monte Carlo and Al Harison in privation to the next monsoon season. The other thing is that we observed another failure in the concrete channel in front of the animal control. There is a hole there that I will coordinate with Jesus how to work together and at least fill it with concrete at this point, slurry concrete, to prevent further damage. And then we are also aware that there are new floodplain maps in the downtown area that will shrink the floodplain area and will help to lower in the water surface elevations in the downtown area. I know that the floodway will go away from a segment of the area there. And FEMA already approved the, well, was presented. And I think the process now is to inform everybody that will be somehow benefited by the no changes. So I'm glad for that because in that way, the community kitchen will be able to open soon. On another thing that we have to work together is related to flood control as well because we have been participating in the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Only the city of Nogales is behind, but we'll provide our comments this week. So that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Are there any additional questions for Juan Supervisor Malera?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. And do we have a monthly report from the town of Patagonia?
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Patagonia? Are they gone?
They're still inside the chat.
Pardon?
They're still in the Zoom call?
They're still on the line?
Yeah.
I know they submitted a written report, right, Angie, that I saw there at the end of your attachment?
Yes, did you?
Okay. And this is a time for public comment in the flood control district? Is there anybody who'd like to comment on flood control? Mr. Sayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray Sayer, I live in Tumacoakry. I was the emergency manager for a few years here at Santa Cruz County. A really low-cost option. Right now, I'm helping emergency management rewrite the Nogales Wash Emergency Response and Recovery Plan. It would be really helpful if the concrete panels were numbered because everyone knows, oh, we're going to be a Doe Street. We're going to be there. But as we have other people come in, Army Corps of Engineers, it could be, I would suggest just numbering the panels. We have a break or we have a crack in Panel 22, whatever it might be. That would be really simple, a low-cost option for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Are there any other comments? Does anybody online like to comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Angie and Public Works for taking care of the potholes on Garden View Drive. Really appreciate their assistance there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, then I will move that we adjourn our flood control district and reconvene regular session.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Action item one, presentation on community cleanups by Jesse Zamorano, President and Executive Director, and Ray Sayer, Chairman of the Santa Cruz County Shining, Arizona.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jesse.
Supervisors and chairman and members of the audience, thank you for having us today. First off, I'd like to introduce a board member that is with us, Ray Hackman, originally from Calgary, Canada, and now a proud Rio Rico citizen, backbone of a lot of what we do. And then everyone knows Ray, and Ray's going to kick off, then I'm coming back.
Ray, welcome back.
Welcome back. You just can't get rid of me, can you? Sorry, so I'm a bad penny. I'm just going to run the first three or four slides. There's 578 slides here? No, just kidding. Won't be that much.
Or what's known as death by PowerPoint, right?
Death by PowerPoint. Just a couple of updates before I get into a few slides. What we're up to, some very interesting things I want to let you know about. Next week, we've already met with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and we have a meeting with them next week to see what kind of support that they can lend for our cleanup project. Santa Cruz Shining, the goal really is to, let's get the trash off the streets. Let's get it out of the riverbeds. Let's do some education for folks on, let's just not throw our junk out, cover your tarps, all that sort of stuff. So we're working with ADQ. I've already met with Tahona Odom. We're probably going to be writing a grant. But the big thing, the really big thing that'll be coming, Jesus Valdez, when I was still here as emergency manager, came to me with this brilliant idea. ASU has already done a survey on where the trash is coming from in the riverbeds. And not surprising, a lot of it's from Mexico. So Jesus Valdez had this idea about constructing a trash separation weir at the border to where, you know, it would work as a filter and it would go and, you know, the tires and trash and all that would be collected in a particular area. There's a passive strategy, there's an active strategy. EPA has received $41.5 billion this year in environmental justice grants. So we're already meeting with them and I've, you know, put Jesus Valdez's idea out to them. And I talked to Jesus as well. I mean, can potentially the county team up on a government-to-government contract to construct a trash separation weir on the US side as well as the Mexico side, all funded by EPA in a government-to-government grant? That would, the scope would have to be done by the Army Corps of Engineers, the construction, because it's a navigable waterway. So big things work in there. And I just wanted to let you know that there's $41.5 billion and we're going to see if we can work on the county with that. It's a non-match grant, so no cost to the county. Apparently, we could get some administrative costs covered. So what are we up to? We've done two cleanups so far. The one was on the east Frontage Road from Pilot down to Firestone Gardens. Thank you Supervisor Bracker for coming and making sure we didn't get bit by snakes or anything like that. Our second cleanup was out of Tubac from Ron Morris Park was our base. I want to thank the county public works. They provided the roll-off dumpsters for us and just a ton of support. And we're able to absorb or somehow absorb the landfill fees for what we got. On that, 230 bags of trash, we filled up a giant dumpster. 130 tires, a refrigerator and a propane tank. The one we did in 2018, we got 210 tires and five roll-off dumpsters. So that was 2018 and under this project. So here's our first cleanup. Supervisor Bracker was at both of them. Thank you. Thank you. Our first cleanup, uh, hundred and twenty bags of trash in, in, in about a one mile and a car bumper, and here we are tipping it over at the landfill, uh, bags from ADEQ. We're looking for, uh, big cleanups. We're thinking we're going to have a scaled cleanup. We can support a neighborhood association, for example. We can give you pick sticks, we can give you gloves, we can give you trash bags, we can give you traffic vests, and you go out and do your own neighborhood. Probably a, a level, that would be like a level one cleanup. And then this would be like a level five cleanup, would be the river. We have a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty people show up, four hours, and, and off we go to it. Uh, so we'll be working that. But what we're looking for is accumulations of trash that we can get to, that we can get in and, and get her done. So if you have something, please let Jesse know. Uh, we'll go scout it out. Daryl and I will scout it out and see, you know, see what, what, if we can do it or not do it, uh, get permission from the landowners and, uh, and move on with that. Jesse?
All right. What's new? What have we been up to? Um, okay. Whoops. I have it upside down, sorry. Okay. Whoops. All right. I'm there now. No, back. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. We are always working, always getting, getting something done, and as part of cleaning up, um, helping others clean up, we are putting up kiosks at four places along the Anza Trail. This is what the board will look like. The important part on the board is that we ask walkers that are using the trails to pick up trash as they go along. Uh, this is the Keep America program. It's called plogging, and then they take their trash with them rather than leave it as a resort. But the board represents all the animals that we are very familiar with. We were approved by the Rio Rico High School as a nonprofit for student community hours. We had about twenty of them come out at our first, uh, excuse me, our second cleanup, and we opened up a social media program for them. I have three volunteers that are working on our Facebook updates. They'll be doing videos and also getting, working on our website design, getting instruction on design and edit. They're terrific kids, and we're very happy for that. We're, we are always cleaning up, um, our neighborhoods. The first picture is around where I live in Rio Rico. The second one is on, uh, Pet Canyon Road, so where someone just opened up their window and threw out their trash. Our county roads, as you can see, it looked like somebody lost their load or a lot of accumulation. And then along the Rio Rico walking trails that are very heavily used, the regular dumping ground for, for trash. This is something the Boy Scouts did, and for some reason, our residents love to throw out their tires at the river. So we hauled these and took them in with our, um, one of our other cleanups. Okay. So the important big program that we have is a trash-free neighborhoods. Um, the City of Tucson, Guadalupe, Maricopa, Florence, and a lot of towns across the U.S. have, uh, programs or variations of this program. And regardless of where it is, all the programs have some common elements. Number one, they educate the public on proper trash disposal. They conduct neighborhood cleanups, which is one of the things that we'll primarily be focusing on. They have recycling reinforcement. Uh, once or twice a year, they have hazardous waste removal, which is computers and everything that doesn't, um, belong in a landfill. And they are all, or some of them, partners with Keep America Beautiful, which is one of our goals to do. Our program model, uh, we will promote the program and then, uh, go in and provide the organization and support to the neighborhoods that are trying to clean up their own. We'll provide them with education, proper trash disposal, ways to recycle, and supply them with gloves, pick-up sticks and vest. We're hoping to provide them with transfer station entry passes and hauling trailers, and we do thank the supervisors so much for providing this for us in the past because we could not do it without you, so we are very grateful. Thank you. And then finally, after all the work is done, a great neighborhood celebration with food and just relax and enjoy. And, um, so that is basically the program that we'd like to be introducing this summer. Whoops, stuck on it. Okay. Whoops. Okay. Can you get me to? That slide. Okay. So how can you help? Or how can the county help? Partner with us, um, support the program so that when we go out to the communities, uh, they know that it's backed by our county leaders, supply the hauling trailer. Uh, the Town of Guadalupe does this, they check out the trailer, very strict, um, requirements, and continue to provide us with the sta-, uh, transfer station fees. Again, we're very, very thankful, and any other financial assistance that you could provide, um, we would be happy with. Whoops. Last one? Okay. Well, the last one, just said, thank you, and again, um, you guys have been wonderful towards us. AIDOP has been wonderful as well, and we're just very, very grateful for the support that you have shown, and, um, Chairman Bracker for coming out so early, uh, at seven o'clock in the morning and supporting us. Your constituents notice that they're always whispering, "Oh, is that our supervisor?" So thank you. Okay?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for putting this program together.
Absolutely. Now he's getting up earlier, so if you start earlier, he'll be ready. A couple of things, if I may, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you and welcome. I'm glad that, that you're here and you've embraced our community as yours and are helping out there. That's very important that it shows the kind of people that are coming into our community that get engaged right away. On this, uh, EPA forty-one million...
Billion.
Billion. Billion with a B, not with an M. Have you identified any areas within the border?
The question is, have, have we identified areas within the border? No, the, um, I have not. This, this would be a government-to-government grant, um, so I think it would be really important that, um, uh, that US EPA partner along with Army Corps of Engineers, that they could build something potentially on the Ephraim Canyon model. I, I'm not the engineer on this. I, I, I recognize a great idea when I see it, and that's Jesus Valdez. So let, you know, let them do that, and let, let's figure it out.
And the only reason I ask is if we can identify, it makes it a lot easier for us to submit a request or support from our congressional, uh, leadership team, whether it's the both senators or, or the House of Representatives, to get EPA and, and the Army Corps of Engineer. You know, we're doing the big Ephraim Canyon project. Hopefully, we'll get the rest of the funds to be able to do that, and hopefully, that'll mitigate some of the trash. But there's still other areas where you go downtown next to the Morley Gate and you see the trash that accumulates next to, uh, the fence that's there. So here's an opportunity, I think, for us to identify, to submit those areas for consideration. I think it makes it a lot easier if we can identify those spots, uh, beforehand because I'm sure it's going to take literally an act of Congress. We need to probably talk to the State Department because it's on the fence, EPA. I think the Sonoran government, government would be very amiable to help us do something like that. I think they, they really care about that, so kudos to Jesus for coming up with that idea. But if we can really get down and identify those things, I think it makes it a lot easier for us when we talk to our federal representatives and continue to push. They're already supporting us on some other things. Uh, I know extra money for the Ephraim Canyon project, other money for your AdGreat crossing there in Rio Rico. So the more information we have, the better prepared we are to, to, uh, advocate for our community, so thank you.
Sir, you make some excellent points, and I think the county is really well-positioned because we are active in the Arizona-Mexico Commission. We're very active on the Border Twenty Twenty-Five effort, which is hazardous materials and has waste and all that sort of stuff as well. Um, and then as well, under these EPA grants, they are going to require that there be a linkage with, uh, NGOs or nongovernmental or 501(c)'s, of which we're certainly write a letter of support along with the Anza Trail Coalition and other coalitions here to support such an effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item two. Pardon? Rudy, do you have any comments? Supervisor Malera? Okay. We'll move on to item two. Discussion, possible action to approve reappointments to serve as judge pro tempore in the Superior Court from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for Superior Court. Vanessa Cartwright full-time, Sheila Dawakon temporary part-time, and DeeDee Semet as a volunteer.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
And a motion as second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve cooperative law enforcement agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA Forest Service for the use of the National Forest System Lands, NFS, lands effective until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven from the sheriff.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion, possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh-four to adopt a fair housing policy to affirmatively further fair housing.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve the City of Tucson High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA Program Grant Agreement, COT, grant number HT dash two-three dash two-nine-five-one from January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of four hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars from the county attorney.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to ratify the authorization signature in TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walmart, National Opioid Settlement Improvement on two twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Under discussion?
I wasn't sure if you had any questions about this, but the way the data, the way the portal works, I had to sign it because I'm the portal person. So even though you all had signed it already, it wouldn't let, it wouldn't take it that way. I had to go through and do an e-signature on it. So that's why you're ratifying my e-signature.
So we de-signatured us, and you signatured you? Okay.
Unfortunately, yes. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion, possible action to approve general consulting contract with MYC LLC for project management consulting on parks, public works, and auctions not to exceed sixty thousand dollars from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve chip ceiling under, for Upper Elgin Road, Elgin Canelo Road, Pendleton Drives, Gaya Cipres, and Martin Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion?
Just, uh, thank you to Public Works and Jesus.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What was the name of your road that you said you had all the potholes? Be, before Jesus came in?
Oh, Garden View.
Your, your, the roads that you said had a lot of potholes, so that they...
Awasalava?
And, uh, the last part is Bolin. So, Jesus, can you look into those? Thanks. I'm, I'm glad that this is on there, that way we can see what we can do to include you guys in it.
Okay.
Public Works? Yes, and, uh, phone number.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, possible action to prove... Discussion, possible action to approve general consulting contract with PR3 Project Management Services for Human Resources and Policy and Procedure Consulting from January first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three in amount not to succeed, exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item ten, discussion, possible action to approve proclamations designating April twenty twenty-two as National County Government Month, April ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, April fifteenth, ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and April sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as National Volunteer Week. And a couple of those are put on the sheriff, on by the sheriff, Sheriff Athlete. Thank you very much for putting those on.
Mr. Chairman, uh, do all of them have a resolution, or is it just the telecommunications that have a resolution? Because we usually read the resolution on...
They, they should be all proclamations, Madam Clerk.
They're all proclamations.
They are. So because our telecommunications and our volunteers are here, I think it would be appropriate to read those just to honor their service and what they do. I mean, we could do by, just to prove them so. We'll do them individually.
Have the clerk of the board read it? We're gonna have a clerk, we're gonna have the clerk of the board read them.
Oh, no. Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll share them here. Which one do you want, please?
Whatever the clerk gives me.
It's the National County Government.
Mr. Chair?
You'll bring me that on my next one? Okay. Supervisor Malera?
No, I just want to personally thank all the, uh, for their services.
Volunteer. Okay.
Do I do those two? And I'll do these two.
Are you organizing this?
Yeah, we're trying to get organized.
Okay.
We're herding cats up here.
Okay. National Government, National County Government Month, whereas counties play an essential role in providing people-centered services by keeping Arizona's communities safe and secure by preserving public health and well-being, ensuring public safety, and promoting local economies and resiliency. And whereas, counties take seriously their leadership role in protecting and enhancing health, welfare, and safety of citizens in the community, and provide the tools we deliver more effective and higher-quality services while containing costs through efficient use of local tax dollars with the goal of fostering economic opportunities. And whereas, with a broad range of responsibilities to residents, county governments uphold a mission to improve lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic engagement by providing public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, emergency management, and economic services that play a key role in every aspect of residents' daily health to disaster response. And whereas, there are fifteen counties in the state of Arizona responsible for and serving the needs of every resident of the state. And whereas, Arizona counties reflect a wide diversity of people, culture, landscape in our state. And whereas, in recognition of the leadership, innovation, and valuable services provided by the states, counties, now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as National County Government Month in recognition of the leadership, innovation, and valuable services provided by all Arizona counties.
Move to approve is read by our chairman?
Second.
Okay. We're gonna approve them individually. Okay. So all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're next. You're next.
No, you got animal.
Do I get animal control? You're gonna maybe do two in a row?
I'll do the last two, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association designated the second full week of April as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and whereas the various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the county, throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers and animal services staff for their dedicated service they provide to the citizens, public safety, and domestic animals across the nation, and whereas every day, animal control officers and animal control technicians put themselves in potentially dangerous situations to protect the health, welfare of all kinds of animals and the public, and whereas Santa Cruz County recognizes and commends the animal care, control department personnel who answer the calls for assistance, capturing roaming and potentially dangerous animals, rescue animals, investigate reports of animal abuse, educate pet owners and about responsible care, and mediate disputes between neighbors regarding pets. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, Arizona hereby proclaim the week of April ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week.
Move to approve as read by your chairman?
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion? I would like to thank the animal control because I work with them a lot, and they come out to Chewbacca, and I've had a few possums at my house, and I really appreciate them coming out in the middle of the night to take them out of my entryway. And, uh, I know that there are residents in Patagonia that, at Santa Cruz County, animal control provides the services out there, and also in Sonora, Elgin, and they're doing a great job. I hear only good things and good feedback about their services, so thank you very much for all that you do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and, and read the following proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas thousands of dedicated public safety dispatchers, call takers, telecommunications, and telecommunications support personnel throughout the state of Arizona provide dramatic life-saving services by talking to stressed callers and calming hysterical crime victims, and they make the diff- the difficult decision using limited information to save the lives or reduce property damage on a daily basis, and whereas the critical functions performed by these public safety dispatchers, call takers, telecommunications, and telecommunications support personnel, both sworn and civilian, play a significant role in the daily lives of approximately two million Arizonans, and whereas the Arizona Department of Administration in cooperation with the Arizona Chapter of National Emergency Number Association has set aside the week of April ninth through the fifteenth of twenty twenty-three to recognize the efforts of these dedicated people. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic educational organizations to observe the week of April ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Safety Telecommunicators Week, commemorating public safety telecommunications who by their faithful and loyal devotion to the responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and witness thereof, we have here unto set our hand and cause the seal of Santa Cruz County to be affixed this fourth day of April of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion?
Chairman, can we do a picture up there?
Absolutely.
Sure. Let's just get through all, let's get through D, and then we'll, we'll get that, and we're gonna...
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more, guys.
Motion carries unanimously.
And thank you for coming in. It's great to see so many people in the audience, albeit that we have a lot of great people that support this community through the sheriff's office and volunteers, so. Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and proceed. Proclamation, National Volunteer Week, April the sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the entire community can affect a positive change with any volunteer action, no, no matter how big or small, and whereas millions of volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly, and whereas during the week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers will be recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneselves in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, we, the Board of Santa Cruz, Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County, call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April sixteenth through April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as National Volunteer Week, commemorating volunteers who by their faithful and loyal devotion to the responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and witness whereof, we here have unto set our hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the county of Santa Cruz, passed and adopted on this fourth day of April, twenty twenty-three. And, Mr. Chairman, I move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'd like to take a moment and just stand and applaud the animal control and the public safety telecommunications. Thank you very much for joining me in that. Also like to give a shout-out to all the volunteers in our community because that's one thing that really makes Santa Cruz County great, is the amount of volunteer organizations and the amount of support that they provide to, to our constituents and to each other. So, thank you very much on that, and perfect data for you to come in and do that for the shining, signing Arizona. Okay, Sheriff, can we get a picture up here?
If you can have the dispatchers and volunteers line up in front.
Uh, can you raise the screen and then they can come up here? So, you can come up here on the dais. Here. Miss Holmes. Put it down.
Sheriff, you gonna get in here?
Okay, the small guy's at the end.
How you doing? Hi.
Hello, sir.
Hi.
taller than you.
Congratulations, thank you.
taller than all of us.
We'll put the sheriff in the middle. We're gonna make you the top of our pyramid. Go on, Sheriff.
He's trying to get by the chair that I'm trying to push out of the way.
Put you in the middle there. So, can you get us all in there?
Yep. Come on, you, get in here.
I hope there's not an emergency exit. We're blocking the exit. Good? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, we're doing more.
Angela. Could we get animal control off?
Thank you. Now we can get the animal control.
Animal control?
Thank you. Thank you. Sheriff.
Okay, I need to talk to you about what's happening on Hartshaw Road, not Hartshaw Road, Blue Haven Road.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Animal control.
Thank you.
And then at the end, we want our volunteers up here, too. You guys do a great job for us.
Thank you.
We'll put Jose in the middle.
This group will be able to get between the flags.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I see now that the peccaries have a bunch of little, little ones.
Everybody get in here between the flags.
Yeah. Scoot over. There.
There we go.
There we are. How's that?
Yep. Right.
Oh, everybody needs to move this way.
Okay, we're just gonna, there we go.
This way?
No, 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 that way, but keep facing it, so we'll face the camera.
One more, one more.
Okay, one more.
Two more. Angela's next.
I think she got her. I got a few.
You got this, you got this group?
Come on, volunteers. Thank you, guys.
Say, thanks. Sorry, didn't give you the shout-out, because you met with them, too.
Because I know if one thing is people and their pets.
Negotiating with neighbors? Every day is your day.
Well, put Jesse in the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no matter.
Is that for her?
There you go.
Well, it's right underneath there, see? So, we ready?
Here, you gotta move this, everybody has to move this way.
Turn a little over, so that way you're right under the...
There we go.
Suck it in.
One more.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here, I'll pull these over here. Yeah, we don't need the other one, just... Okay. That's pretty cool.
You're missing all the fun, you guys.
Yes, you are.
You are. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna put you in the, Photoshop you in, Rudy.
They're using, they're using those new Google phones.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
We can put you in. Okay, are we ready to go?
Oh, they're gonna...
Okay, now we get to the exciting part of our agenda. The discussion possible action to approve bonds for duplicate warrants. A and B.
Move to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we can repay the people that lost their checks. Item twelve, discussion possible action on the recommendation of approval for a bingo license application for the Santa Cruz County Mustangs Four-H Club.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have to have two more things I have to write, read. Leader Lay H. Chatham in Sonora, Arizona.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, discussion possible action to approve application for fireworks display at the Rio Rico High School on May first, twenty twenty-three, and May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fourteen, tax valuation adjustment, one-one-six dash one-two dash two-six-zero dash A, Michael J. Weiss and Jeanette Laska Weiss, resolution number five-six-six-one-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item fifteen, approval minutes from three twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item sixteen, demands.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve demands in the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents, of which five hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one and fifty-three cents are from the general fund.
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any discussion?